He was here a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, he sat in the back for the alcohol ordinance.
Yes.
For the alcohol ordinance, yeah.
No. No.
He said he won't run.
That's like death to me. It is, it's death.
You're at the mercy of the city.
Whatever happens, yeah.
I said never said never.
No, that was the scariest movie I've ever seen.
He's in a magnum right now.
I've been a sailor for many years and something bad, bad.
Though he's young though.
He's made it.
Hello, hello.
I said, I know. I was waiting, oh, oh.
National Guard Station.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Okay, how are you? I'm doing well yourself?
Okay.
You'd never come back mad at us.
Like right here.
Thank you.
Right on time, yeah.
Down there, you know, that big of a wave, yeah.
Child care. I thought about bringing the boys here.
Brooklyn for Seattle tomorrow for five days.
You know, I do that, we were paddling and there's some big waves of Hawaii and we did a race. They had a quarter men and there were some like fifteen twenty foot waves.
They got, they got that covered.
I got one that technically isn't one that most definitely is not.
And they were pounding cliffs and the rocks next to them. And they said it was the scariest race they had ever done because they had a Hawaiian on the team, thank God, who was helping to steer because that's, that's not something you're used to dealing with.
Actually kind of close for the length.
Okay.
I don't think it's a big, I don't think it's a long meeting. I didn't want to start.
I now call all the regular session beating of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, July twenty first, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Ken Vineyard of Family of Faith Church. Blair, what stand? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful tonight that we can come boldly before your throne of grace. We ask you to bless each person here tonight. We pray for a successful and productive meeting before you, O God. We know that you are the source of all blessings and that you are our strength. Your word declares for us to trust in the Lord and lean not to our own understanding, but in all thy ways acknowledge him and he shall direct thy path. So we acknowledge you tonight and we ask you for direction, God. We ask you to bless Mayor Archie and the Tarpon Springs City Council members as they serve your people this day. Give each man and woman the strength, the wisdom, the knowledge to make wise decisions for our great town. Holy Spirit guide us during these discussions and give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. So we call on your name tonight and we ask you to bless and protect all those who support our great town. The firefighters, the police, and all the emergency workers, Lord. I pray for your hand to direct and protect as we do your will. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We would now go to public comments on items that will not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to our Consider Agenda. Is there anything someone would like to talk about?
No, thank you.
I just had some questions on item five.
Okay.
I was just wondering, how many cities in this area do, and have they done studies on police officers doing twelve hour shifts opposed to eight hour shifts?
Twelve hour shifts are very prevalent in law enforcement, especially in sheriff's departments. There are cities that do it. There are a lot of studies out there as to the benefits of these shifts. But for us, we wanted to do a trial period. It was in the contract, do a trial period to see how it would work. You know, is it better scheduling? Can we offer scheduling that will compete with other agencies? Because Pinellas County Sheriff's Department went, the twelve hour shifts in North County, Pasco works them, Hillsborough works them, Tampa works a modified version of them. They tend to be very popular.
What are the benefits? You mentioned some benefits.
Well, I mean.
Because I worry about our police officers and our citizens and whether, you know, the effectiveness, I guess, on the eleventh hour. So that's why I was curious.
Yeah, the benefits are is they have two weekends off a month, which most people never get. They have a long week, short week period. So on a short week, you have a lot of time off. On a short week, sometimes you only work two days. So if you want to take vacation, you only take twenty-four hours and you get a whole week off. We have officers right now of overtime that work in twelve hours, so.
So do you think there'd be less overtime then?
We believe so. We believe so. And through accreditation, we have policies that limit how many hours a day someone can work. It's a max of sixteen unless it's an emergency situation.
All right, I was just curious because I didn't, you know, I hadn't seen studies and I didn't know the effectiveness of officers who are working those long hours and so, thank you.
And I think the benefit of it, it's a trial period. You know, I wouldn't do it any other way, neither would the city manager. We just see how it works.
Okay.
And if it benefits the department and the officers, then that's something we might look at long term. But if that is the case, if it benefits the department and the officer, we would have to come back to you and do a permanent schedule.
It looks like there's a substantial increase in salary from the eight hour to the twelve hour annual salary.
Yeah, they go from twenty-eight to twenty-one eighty-four, but we believe it's going to be an offset in overtime.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Special Consider Agenda Number Ten, Authorized City Managers assigned D R four twenty.
Again, we're at that time of the year, starting off the budget process. And again, this is the highest that we can set the taxes to go. And we're proposing that it be kept the same that we've had in the last four to five years, at five point four five. Again, during the budget process, it could be taken lower if you choose, but it cannot, once you make the vote tonight, it cannot go any higher than that. And obviously, as the city manager wants to keep his job, I wouldn't propose any higher than the present mileage rate. So that's what the proposal you're getting. And that begins, and again, next week, next Tuesday night, we begin the budget process to look at that. But that is the rate I'm proposing for you.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Ordinance Resolution Number Eleven, Ordinance Twenty Fifteen dash zero nine, Comprehensive Plan, Plan Text Amendment, Future Land Use Element Adoption of New Residential Land Use Category Residential Very Low. This is second reading.
Ordinance Twenty Fifteen dash zero nine, An Ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Amending the Future Land Use Element of the Comprehensive Plan With the Addition of a New Residential Land Use Category to be Designated as Residential Very Low, R V L zero to one unit gross acre, Providing for Other Modifications That May arise from Review of this Ordinance, Providing for Severability and Providing for an Effective Date, Second Reading of Ordinance Twenty Fifteen dash zero nine by Title Only. Ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only on February twenty-seven and July three, two thousand and fifteen.
Good evening. The only additional information that I have is this has been forwarded on to the Department of Economic Development as required by statute. It has come back with no objection from any of the agencies that are required to be notified. And staff is recommending approval of Ordinance Two Thousand and Five, or Two Thousand and Fifteen dash zero nine, Amending the Future Land Use Element of the Comprehensive Plan to Adopt a New Future Land Use Category for Residential Very Low as stated in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I definitely think that this is necessary, this ordinance. But I had a question about the three point zero beds per permitted dwelling and wondered how that came about and what justifies three beds. Usually I would think in a setting that's an acre and a larger house, and how is that going to be enforced? So how did you all come up with a three point zero beds permitted per dwelling?
Well, I know that this is something that was actually, is being done as part of the countywide change. And as a result, I can't really speak exactly to how that was done. It was done before I came on board with the city. So that being the case, I know that it will be enforced through our existing land use processes, through site plan review and those type of things to ensure that those are complied with, so.
So you think that three point zero beds will stay in there?
I think it will.
Any additional questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item Number Twelve is Resolution Twenty Fifteen dash twenty-seven, Reorganization of the Planning and Zoning Department.
Resolution Twenty Fifteen dash twenty-seven, A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Authorizing Changes in the Organization of the Planning and Zoning Department, Including Creation of a New Position With an Associated Position Description and Providing for an Effective Date Hereof, It's Resolution Twenty Fifteen dash twenty-seven by Title Only.
This is, this is an item that you originally, I thought you would see during our budget process. However, due to circumstances and due to losing our planning director suddenly and having our one man show, Heather, for the short period of time, I just felt the need to get this position in now, get it advertised, and get some help. It's really a position of an office coordinator right now. Heather and Karen do everything in the office. They have no support staff. When they were, when the department was combined with building, they had support staff there. They've been sharing some with them. They've been sharing some with public service. But they need their support office coordinator with a volume of stuff coming in. They have to have it to even near be effective. This position, for this budget year, we've got the money there because of non salaries easy. And you'll see in the budget time that it'll be there. But this is a necessary position. By the time we get it advertised, hired, it's going to be probably after October anyway. But it gives me a little jump besides starting in October and getting somebody on board in November, December. It's a necessary position. We have to have if we want to function in the planning division. So I'm bringing it forward to you now for approval so we can get it advertised and hopefully by October one, get it hired.
Well, I just say, I appreciate you bringing it forward now simply because as we continually move forward with building in the Tarpon area, which is what all of us hope in future businesses, is that from an administrative perspective, it's going to take more. And especially now with a position being vacant, maybe by the time we fill one, we can fill the other one and be at full speed. So my hope. Commissioner Banther and Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just want to know what is the current application status or what have you for the principal planner position?
I believe we got to interview you Friday.
Okay, I mean, like, I'm sure my colleagues can attest. I mean, that's the one thing. And it's a good problem to have that people stop and ask, what's going on with planning and zoning? We only have, you know, one person in there right now. So I'm in full support of this to get them a full-time support staff. That's desperately needed. I know Karen's busy with things related to what she was hired for. And whatever we can do to get that planner in there as well to help, to help Heather, I would be in full support of. Because it's just, I think, to sustain the growth we have, we have to have the backup to do it, so.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Heather for the work that you're doing and we appreciate it. Welcome aboard. And to say, Karen, thank you so much for wearing multiple hats because you're doing stuff that is not part of your job description. It is noticed, it is appreciated. Thank you. Hopefully, as we move forward, and I do support this resolution, hopefully as we move forward, we can move in a direction where everybody's doing what they are best positioned to do. Thank you.
And just a note, I failed to mention that because of the primary thing, but that personal office support, we'll be able to provide some support to Karen too. So it's not only, you know, because they work hand in hand, but it'll also be a support person to, even when we get her back to doing her own jobs and stuff, to help her with the paperwork, the filing stuff that, you know, takes away from the time she could be out there doing things. So it's going to, it has a dual role and a dual purpose for that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. I definitely agree that we need this position. It's critical to have help in that department. And I also appreciate Karen for everything you've been doing this past year. And I was also curious about the principal planner position. I know that when we have someone out in permitting and inspections, that, you know, that department almost comes to stop. So I was wondering if in that position, if we can look for someone who has those credentials to help Anthony or permitting and inspections.
Well, we're trying. One of the dynamics in the job market, and we've talked about it pretty extensively at the yearly city managers conference, is in the field of building and planning, because things are booming, those positions in cities are being stolen right and left by private enterprises going into the city, not only taking the best and the brightest, but leaving the application pool when we're looking. And that's one of the biggest challenges is going to be for us in building, with inspectors, with planning people, with growth and private enterprise. In fact, Mr. Healy, who's the one helping us doing it, he hired away the individual from Safety Harbor. And Safety Harbor was very, very sad to let go and involved with them. He just got him hired away by private enterprise because these people are putting the dollars forward. So as far as we can tell by applications, this job market is very hard for cities to find that. So hopefully, we got some that we're going to be interviewing and hopefully we can get one. But we are going to be seeing and planning. That's why it's so important we keep the people we got because that is a challenge to cities all over the state, competing with what's going on in the private enterprise world and the dollars of us being able to get and keep positions. So we are hopeful that we can interview and find somebody soon and get them on board and they have those degree of qualifications instead of bringing somebody out of school and having to teach them. Although, you know, we don't know until we get an interview and where we're going to go. But we'd like to get somebody with many qualities as possible in there. But I can tell you from the first round that we did, I mean, you know, we've overhauled the planning division twice within the year. So we can tell by those application processes, you know, the applications coming in is a tough process. But hopefully, we'll get that. And if she can find the right person for that position, we get this hired. And, you know, we'll do our best to keep them here and not do that competition, so.
Yeah, we've had quite a bit of growth in the city and continue to grow, so we don't want to fall behind on that area.
Oh, yeah, because more is coming, so we got to be ready for it.
I'm concerned about that.
No additional questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next item is Appointment to Audit Committee. We have, I think, Mr. Roger Salu as a recommendation.
Just a little update too. We did this, as most of you know, our auditing firm decided to go, not locally, but on the national level, decided to get out of city auditing. So we have to replace him. When we went through the process several years ago, we formed an audit committee and had Mr. Salu from the Budget Volunteer. So he's been through the process of an audit committee with the city. He has graciously said that he would serve again. And that's why we will be doing the same process we did two or three years ago, to try to find the new firm to do our auditing and stuff. So that's why we're asking that he be appointed by you. Since it's a temporary board, he goes on and goes off, he is allowed to serve on that board with it because it's just a temporary board. After the fact, it goes away, it's gone. So that is why he is able to serve on that board. And I say he did it the last time, so he has experience of what to look for when you chose him last time as a commission. His background and stuff, he provided us some great input in the original process, so we'd like to see that again.
Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval. Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The next item is Citizen Academy. Will you go start it off?
Yes, I will make this quick, I promise. You all have the backup that I supplied. As you know, I started in June meeting with Oldsmar officials about their Citizens Academy and how they do it and the benefits of it. And like I've said, they've supplied us with everything they have so we don't have to reinvent the wheel with processes and with applications and guidelines. And so what I think overall is going to bring to our, to our, to our, to our city is that we have so much to offer. We are probably the most, the most full-service city in Pinellas County, if not in Tampa Bay. And I think many, many residents don't know everything we have to offer. And I think by doing this, we can show them where their tax money is going to and also possibly as well gain a better interest in the advisory boards. And Oldsmar, that's been doing this for at least, I want to say, six to eight years, has said that's just been the case with them, that they've gotten more of a citizen interest in their government and have gotten a greater interest in their advisory boards. And so what I proposed in the backup is that we have a fall application process that will go through the clerk's office. Oldsmar does theirs in the fall, but I've said before, I think we're too busy here in the fall for that. So I propose that we have the academy for about eight, for about eight weeks, starting in mid-January, running into about March. And the applications come in the fall. We can, they, Oldsmar does twenty to about twenty-five per class. Anybody can apply. But you, if there's a max out of the class, residents get the priority. And each week is a different theme, such as one week's police, one week's fire. And the meeting starts off with a meal from a local restaurant. And also, each member of the class gets a polo shirt. And then at the end of the class would be a graduation ceremony. So from what I've talked with Mark and Irene, I think the city is equipped to handle this as far as manpower. And I've requested ten thousand dollars in the budget for it. And because it's in the budget, it can be reviewed each year for its efficiency and if it's doing what we think it's going to do and hold accountable for that. So I'm open to any questions you all have. But I really think that this will be a way to get better interest in city government and better applicants for our advisory boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of them have any type of fee as for, as for people to be involved in it?
None, none that I have researched do, no. Typically, that's just not the case with that. The largest expense, and again, I hope it not to exceed ten thousand. The largest expense, or rather, I hope it to be less than that, is obviously the meal. But Oldsmar said that they usually, they don't like to ask local restaurants to do it for free, but they usually get like a discount price and kind of helps start the meeting off in a, in a, in a, in a good way. And then you have the polo shirt. So that's the bulk of the expense there. But no, Oldsmar does not charge for theirs. And I don't believe that the sheriff, who runs his, I think, almost year-round, does as well, no.
Yeah, I don't know of any either that I've known and looked at. Really, I've been trying to price this since this item. I still think we're going to come in the five thousand to seventy-five hundred and be able to put on a good show. But this is our first time, so we're kind of saying it to the outside. But really, because I want to, you know, talking with Commissioner Banther and talking with some other people who have done this after he brought it up, there's some real investment in this. Because I can guarantee you, as you're looking at the list of boards and replacement and the lack of people we have in the community on boards, that money is a worthwhile investment. If we get, if we get some citizens who are interested in on our boards and performing that, it's well worth the investment doing. And that's one of the biggest things in talking with people that they say the advantage of it, it's always advantage to educate your citizens. But if you can get some board members for it and get them interested, that's vital. Because we should just have such a hard time getting those commitments and stuff. So I think it'll be less, you know, you know, we're going to do some, some things. I'm thinking when we do our cultural affairs day, we'll rent the trolley and take them around to the trolley doll. I mean, I want to, I want to do it, you know, we've always done, when we do things in Tarpon, we always do it the right way. But I even think with doing things such as that or stuff, I still think we're going to keep that expense a lot lower than the ten thousand. And we can still do some special things and get citizens involved and hopefully have, you know, the word of mouth after the first one, just have people, you know, knowing what goes on here. So, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a very small amount to invest in that, that portion of the reason for it. Plus, you got citizens that'll be more involved when we make decisions and when things go on in different parts, they'll have more of an understanding of why it happens. And, you know, hopefully, the complaints and the misunderstandings are less too, so.
Yeah, my thoughts just one, hopefully, as all of us hope is that it's an overflow and we have to use. But, you know, we have to monitor that just to make sure that, you know, people are taking advantage of it. Oh, Commissioner Seber?
Yes, I wondered what other cities or Oldsmar do to advertise for these classes? And what would you propose we do to promote getting people to these classes?
That's, that's a good question. Oldsmar has such a reputation for theirs, they don't really have to advertise. I mean, they're, I talked to the city clerk, which I'm going to go to their first class for their fall one. I believe it starts in August. They're already at twenty. They just advertise through standard ways because theirs has traction. For us, I would, you know, definitely, I would do Facebook, you know, that seems to be where a lot of it's at. Issue a press release and just word of mouth. I don't, I will be shocked if it's with little effort, get twenty to twenty-five people in this town that want to do this kind of academy. And I think by having it to be that, that, that high of quality and also capping it, it's going to advertise itself. Definitely whichever means we have to advertise that we already do, I think will be enough. But the best, I think, is word of mouth.
Thanks. Great idea.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Commissioner Banther, for your foresight in this and utilizing your resources and other municipalities to kind of keep us on par with some of the things that other people are doing. I know that they look to us, you know, for the same, for the same reasons to keep on par. But I think the Citizens Academy is a great idea. Anytime I feel like you can create awareness and reinvestment into your community by educating, you know, the people within your community, I think that's always a positive. And I think this is something that's going to, the twenty or twenty-five people that will be, you know, in this class, if each one of them shares with their neighbor or their other friends or family at a ballgame, you know, what they've learned in that class, I feel like the, you know, the investment of five or ten thousand dollars to make this happen is really going to go a long way to, you know, promote our city within. So I want to thank you for that. I think it's a great idea. It's similar, you know, in a lot of ways to almost like the summer jobs program in terms of like educating people and showing people kind of what we do within the community. But, you know, it has a lot of different, different parts as well. So mainly, I just wanted to thank you. I don't really have too many questions. I really hope it takes off. I would agree with you, though, that I don't think that it's going to be a challenge to fill the class of twenty or twenty-five people. And I also think that you'll find a nice mix and array of all age groups. So I look forward to it. I hope you keep us posted on your progress.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Any other public comments on this item? Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. This concludes our agenda. Chief?
No comments, Mayor. Thank you.
No comments.
City manager?
Just one. You know, a lot of things are disturbing these days on the national level. And a lot of them here, we have no control over. But obviously, from my email I sent you, there's a very disturbing thing that happened on the local level. And that is the abrupt ending of the funding for the Adults with Disability monies to Pinellas County schools, which puts two hundred. County schools, which puts two hundred disabled adults that were supposed to be going back to school in August and had been going like the Grow Group in Tarpon for twenty-five years or however long. I can remember when we adopted them in Cops and Kids and worked with them. It was a very sudden process that the legislator cut the funding. I think all you're going to get if you ask them is you're going to get the standard political line of what happened and told that there's a lot of other funding put elsewhere, which is fine, except I'm worried about the two hundred and three in Pinellas County, but specifically the fifteen or twenty that's affected by Tarpon. So, as I told you, I don't think we have any problem. I will go into that budget and find a way to take over the Grow Group program and incorporate it into our recreation department, our recreation division with Craig Dolan and with Officer Quinones from Cops and Kids, who is the one that, I mean, we've already throughout the years with the school system, we provided the building, we provided the nursery center, we provided the library for them on Wednesdays. We have already provided as many, much in-kind service as the school has paid for them. They've been a part of the community, they've been a part of our groups, they sell their plants, they work. Probably what we'll do with recreational, we'll incorporate them more into city projects, our city parks, you know, whole horticulture within, you know, our different areas to have them out in the community and doing that. I think not only we'll have the budget funding for them, but I think some groups will come together and, and I think we'll get money from organizations, from material, so I don't see we have a problem and budget time, I'll have that planned to bring to you. We may have to do some fast things with positions, maybe a temporary position to start, who's a full-time to bring Paula Littlefield or something if she's agreed. Obviously, she's still an employee of the school system, so I can't be recruiting or doing, but whoever we get, again, we've got Officer Quinones who's run that program a while, we got Craig in Recreation, so somehow, we're going to try to make it, and I know you as a commission, from talking to you, and I know this community, you know, they're family to us, and we're not going to let family down and let that program go away, so we're going to take it up. I just hope there's some champions throughout this Pinellas County community who are going to be involved and do something for the other hundred and eighty that are effective, but I think we're going to take Grow Group into a great recreational program and provide for our disabled adults like they've been done for these years and fully intend to have that budgeted, and I know this community, I already had people, you know, what do you need? You need donations and material. People have already been calling me, that's heard about it, so I've already told the parents that I'm going to be bringing it forward in the board. They, they know a lot of you and know that you'll be behind them in this effort, so at least our families aren't like some other ones worried about what they're going to do in August, when they're supposed to be going back to the Pinellas County school system, to the classes they've been doing too many years, but we take care of our own here in Tarpon and we'll have a great program and continue it for this part of our community and stuff, so you'll be seeing that added to the budget time and we'll run a great program for them and I hope people step up throughout this county and do something for the rest of the, the adults that are involved in this.
Well, I'd say first, I, I appreciate, you know, your thought. I know that some people have already talked to me about dissatisfaction about what's happening. My hope is that the school system itself would step up. I know money is scarce, but you have to have some priorities and that they would do some things, too. One thing about the city of Tarpon is that the people have always been benevolent and community minded, so I don't think that there's going to be any problem in terms of additional support, but hopefully, some things happen throughout the county and especially at the school board level. I know anytime dollars are missing, then you have to do some things, but hopefully, they too feel that, that effort is important, so. Commissioner, I meant, Madam Clerk? Commissioner Banther?
No comments, but well, I should say, I'm in support of, of what, of what Mark's doing, and I think it's wise that we take that, though it's, though, though it's a shame the reason that Tallahassee cut it, but I think it's smart to take that in-house, so we have control over it, we can improve the program, we don't have to rely upon anybody in the county or the state to have that service, because you can, I mean, it's true, you can judge a community by how they treat those that are disadvantaged, so, I mean, that's just kind of, that's just kind of, you know, uneasy choice for, for me, so thank you for doing that.
I, I don't have a lot to say. I, I would also like to say thank you and congratulations to our city manager in, in terms of taking a leadership role on something so important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tarpen?
No comments. You know, I'm supporting you, so.
Yeah.
We're all good.
Yeah.
Of course, I, I agree with, with all of you, and I want to talk about a little bit of fun in Tarpon on Saturday night. We have a wine walk coming up, so it's all through the town, downtown and on the sponge docks, and come out and support your local merchants and try between twenty-five and thirty different wines. And I think the information's on our website, so.
Well, and I don't have any comments, so if I look at the clock right, we'll adjourn this meeting at seven oh five.